Well, good evening and welcome to the December 18th, 2018 Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Norfolk. Please be advised that this meeting may be video-audio taped. Let's see, 7:00. We have a request for continuance for 134 Main Street Site Plan and Special Permit. Do we have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
We have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Where do we continue at, to?
Continuing at 2:00.
They've been requesting it be continued to February.
Which is the date of February 12th.
The 7:00 PM.
Motion to continue to February 12th at 7:00 PM.
Sounds good to me.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. It is a vote. And we have five minutes to do something else here. Let's move down and do Pondville Plaza, 35 Pine Street. I have a request for extension of site plan decision 2013-06 and special permit 2013-07 to 12/2019. Now, this is the Alquaglieri development on the corner of Valley Street and Pond Street.
Right.
It's a two-story development on a hillside with one story in the back and two in the front, as I remember.
Correct. They called that Pondville Plaza.
Yeah. Yeah. Did you get any, in addition to the request to extend it, did you get any reason why?
The applicant states that due to delays in design and construction preparation.
Design and construction, yeah, okay. I see it.
And we got an email from Richard this afternoon recommending granting an extension.
Yes, we did. Yep, yep, yep.
This is the one up the hill from the one they just built?
It's, yeah, no, it's on the corner of Valley Street and Pond Street.
Sort of kitty corner across from the Pondville Medical Center.
That's right. If you went by the medical center heading towards Foxborough, you pass Valley Street, it's right on the corner there. It's a wooded hillside between two private homes. So, do I have a motion to?
Where did they get the December 20th, 2019 date from?
That's the date of their original decision.
So, would you extend to the, what ends up happening, you extend to the meeting beyond that? Or that's just when it expires? They don't really want it extended to that point?
Yep, nope, so if you just can vote to extend it for one year.
One year. As I recall, this is the second extension.
This is the.
So, it's about to expire right now? Okay. That's what it says on this.
Maybe even more than a second extension there, huh?
This is the third extension.
Third extension, yeah, okay. I have no objection to the extension, but, okay, this requires a motion to extend.
Motion to approve an extension of site plan decision number 2013-6 and special permit number 2013-07 to December 20th, 2019.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. We got two more minutes here. Let's do the, Aaron, let's do the minutes, just get that out of the way.
All right. For the minutes dated October 24th, 2018, there was one correction on page two, item two, where I motioned and seconded a motion, so Betsy's going to fix that one.
Yep.
Otherwise, I think they're good.
No, on the back, on page four, I think I gave a correction. Correction that was incorrect, so. Grant for creating town center, I think it's zoning, isn't it? Rezoning? Zoning articles. It may include the design guidelines, but.
Creating town center zoning changes?
I think so. Isn't that what the grant is for?
The grant is for the zoning changes. The guidelines are part of the zoning.
Yeah, yeah, so that should read.
The grant is for creating town center zoning changes.
Right, right, okay, so, as amended, right.
So, that was one, I guess we should do them one at a time.
Yes, we should, okay.
Those are two changes to those minutes.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the minutes of Wednesday, October 24th?
I have to make that motion. Motion to accept the minutes dated, as amended, dated 24 October.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
And I have no corrections to the meeting minutes dated 19 November 2018.
So, we have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept. Meeting minutes dated November 19th, 2018, as presented.
Second. Second, am I right? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. It is now 7:10. We need a motion to continue the site plan public hearing for 3 David Road.
Motion to continue. 3 David Road Site Plan to?
January 15th.
January 15th, 2019, at 7:10 PM. Wait, are we at 7?
No, there's one at 7 already.
I've got something scheduled at 7, so 7:10 is hard here.
7:10 PM.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? All right, now we got 10 more minutes, let's keep plugging away here. Review 16 Sharon Ave, mass building and bridge building modification. Okay, I think that's one we got from Rich's.
Yep, he said his recommendations, the changes fall under F-11A2, site plan exemption. The planning board agrees with his recommendation, they'll draft a letter to the applicant.
Yeah, okay.
And there are a few design review board comments in your packet, I believe, as well, that I received recently from.
Yep. We should first, Doug, but was it a matter of major modification? Do we vote on that? Do we have any drawings here that we could share with the board tonight?
I actually can pull them up on.
The screen.
I do have about a minute to warm up, I think.
So, where the second floor offices were, Erin? Erin, what are they doing with that space? Just eliminating it?
I don't remember seeing it. I wasn't at the meeting for the DRB last night, but I don't.
You have hard copies.
Putting a slope roof on that, on that slope extent, front extension, yeah.
So, is the slope in the front or the back of the building?
It's in the front coming at you as you look at it from the street.
Erin, I've got a, oh, there it is. It might be a little bit of a screen here, too, if that's a hard copy.
Hi, Bob.
I did, thank you, yes, I got them.
We were just discussing 18 Sharon Ave.
This is, Erin just gave me, so the front looks like it's, the front there in the same?
Yeah.
This is the change here?
This is the change here, yeah. It used to be two stories.
So, this is from the left elevation.
I may know the wireless password here.
And right elevation, so it's in the back.
Should be Norfolk 123, I think it's a capital N, but I can't be sure.
I think it does, this is the front.
Yeah, that's what you're looking at right here. No, this is what you were looking at, phrase off.
That's right, I mean, from this, this right.
The left elevation.
Yes. But if you were standing on the street, you're looking in this way. And what you're looking at is that slope.
Probably gonna have to change that tomorrow.
That area there, that white area there is the slope roof that you're looking at.
Well, if that's the case, that should be the front elevation.
It is, that elevation.
Not the street front, though. So, what did it look like before? This was straight?
Yeah, I think it went up to here and it was a straight.
Lowercase words, right.
Anyhow, how we doing and fishing those drawings up?
Yeah, maybe I didn't save them in the folder. I've got the photometric plan, I've got the site plan. Hold on, let me check. One more sec.
Well, we have a hard copy here that Erin brought, so.
I'll try to show them best.
If we need that, we can look at that. Did you get an email from me yesterday? Do you remember?
Looks like I never sent it. I have it here in draft.
No, I didn't.
It was comments for the meeting last night.
Okay. There's a rendering of it.
That's looking at from where? Sharon Ave?
Yeah. At the police station to the right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are those pictures before the modification request? Yeah, I think this is after. So, this is after, so they, they used to be one big structure, now they dropped down and just.
So, the top view that we're looking at there is, if you were standing in the street looking at the building, that's what you'd see.
I think it looks nicer than one big box, so even the elimination of the floor, I think, improved it.
John, you want to discuss whether it should be a minor or?
Yeah, I'm just being at the, before change, they all seem minor to me.
Yep.
And we have a design review board just wants the addition of some landscaping.
Yep.
On the side area, which I think we're getting incorporated into our approval.
Yep. All right, so we need a motion to accept these changes as a minor modification?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Betsy, you will capture the DRB request for plantings in the decision.
We will.
Okay.
Now, we should have a motion to.
Now, we have a motion to approve the changes?
Motion to, is there also one?
Yeah, go.
Motion to approve the minor changes from RSCOM regarding 16, 18 Sharon Ave. As stated in his letter dated December 13, 2018, incorporated in this approval would be the recommendations for the extra landscaping from the design review board letter dated December 18, 2018.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. I declare that it is 7:20. We need a motion to continue the public.
7:20, that's the January.
Pardon me?
Yeah, 7:20.
Yeah.
Motion to continue Cranberry Heights, definitive open space subdivision two, January, I forgot the date already, 15th, at 7:20.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Okay, where are we now? Meeting scheduled for 2019, you can see that that's repeat of what we got for information from Betsy's last meeting. And town planner updates, town steering committee for that grant. We got a note from Rich on that.
Yeah.
Sir?
The committee, I thought, was open to the public, but apparently it's open to residents of the B-1 district.
The public hearing will be open.
Right.
Yeah, but.
I thought we were, I didn't know that the public.
What?
Member of the steering committee was intended to be from the B-1 district.
Yeah, I think the information I read seems.
Yeah, he had said that.
Pretty decent about a five-person committee and generating any perception of.
Conflict.
Conflict, and of course, at the same time, the same input would be from everybody we talked about, public owners, B-1 business owners, just the voting would be by the five persons that are on the board. I think that's what Rich had suggested.
Yes, it is. He's got Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Advisory Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Board of Health, so those would be the five.
Correct.
Apparently, he approached you for the Board of Selectmen position.
The Board of Selectmen voted last night, I'll be joining the committee.
Whether you want to or not, I see. All right, Planning Board.
Look at you.
We, we need a member to join this, this committee.
I respectfully decline, by the way, in just saying.
Could be a twofer.
Could be a twofer, yeah. Do we have any volunteers?
I'll volunteer.
All right, thank you, Erin. And we have the other three members designated. I presume that when he's put a name here against Advisory Board, Zoning Board, and Board of Health, that he's approached those people and they've agreed, but.
Yes.
I think that's the case, yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff Kane is the rep for the Board of Health.
Yeah, okay, good.
Good.
All right, any other discussion on this topic? Sir?
Sorry. At the end of Rich's email, he says there's a second option, which would be to open it up to two to four, two or four residents, join the committee that don't have any property or business interest in the B-1 zoning district.
Yep, yep.
I guess I was, I guess I'm still confused. I thought we were trying to have a member of the public on the committee.
We were.
Right now, we don't.
We were trying to do that, and I think the feedback that Rich got from the one person that showed interest was that they felt that there could be a potential conflict if they try to steer or direct the conversation one way, and they prefer not to have.
If that person comes from the B-1 district.
If they came from the B-1 district, right.
At the end of his sentence, this statement here, he says, "We could consider having residents from outside the B-1 zoning district on the committee." I would think we would do that.
Once we have a meeting and invite them to future meetings for their input, so we would start with the five-person board, and then dependent on interest from there.
I think that's, that's referring to the person from the B-1 district.
That don't have any property or business interest in the B-1 zoning district.
All right, so are you proposing that we revise Rich's recommendation?
I propose that we revise.
To include people from outside the.
I guess I'm asking.
Is Richard recommending that as a representative of the, like, is he saying that the planning board is recommending that, or him as the town planner is recommending?
He as the town planner is recommending this, five, five people, but, you know, leaving the door open for, for two additional.
When's the first meeting?
Is it in our sort of jurisdiction purview to?
I'm sorry?
Is it in our sort of, you know, our opinion of or jurisdiction to go against his recommendation on that, or do we just recommend that he changes?
I think that's what I'm getting at, though. He's, he's, it's open, right? The goal was to have a member, I believe, as we discussed last time, the goal was to member have, have a member of the public on the committee, right?
Well, you need two members, you need two members, then.
Or we don't have any.
I know, but, I mean, you're either gonna look for two members of the public with no relation to the B-1, so you don't have a, an even amount of members on the board for vote, and if you do, you're gonna have to capture two of these folks before the first meeting and get them updated. When's the first meeting? January?
January something, I don't know what. Do you know, Betsy, when the first meeting?
I don't.
It's in January, some, sometime, let's say the middle of January.
I like the idea of a five-member board for a couple of reasons. First, everybody that's gonna be on this committee has some knowledge of the setup right now with the town, the infrastructure, and the parameters of this grant, and number two, I think that the input from everybody is important, but as we found out over the years, a lot of times, the input becomes very limited, if any, so I think we invite everybody to show up like we had talked about before, and if they show up, their comments are taken, they just don't have a vote. Or you can look for two more outside members, so that may take some time.
Yep. Well, I'm not against starting the five, and I'm not against adding two, two outside from the public as, as well, down the road, but I think it's important to get started.
Hmm.
And it's gonna take, what I think Rich said, four, five, six meetings, something like that. So, you get the first meeting under your belt, and then if you want to reach out and get two more people, okay by me.
So, at a higher level, my understanding of this committee as a whole is that they would be coming up with a recommendation for rezoning for this district, that the planning board would then sponsor in an article to a town meeting.
Yes.
So, that's where the connection comes in between the planning board's oversight of what the committee is gonna be bringing back as a recommendation, and I think that's why the planning board is kind of outlining what the parameters are for the structure of said subcommittee.
And I think the whole idea behind this is to reexamine the density issues here in the B-1 district. Right now, we have a certain, certain set of density rules, which, of course, get ignored anytime a 40B rolls up, and we've had a couple of those, most, most recently, another one just got filed, again, as I understand it. And so, the question is, do we want to do it, revise our density by 40B, or do we want to look at it, see what we want to do? I think that's where we're going with this, among other things.
You were around, Bob, for the history on this, do you recall?
Pardon?
The history on the, on the, you're on the board, I think, when we come up with the first program, which was two, two-bedroom units for each 30,000-foot lot in the mixed use, and that sufficed for a number of years until we did a pro forma, a financial pro forma on that, to find out that with the rents in the town of Norfolk and the cost to construct, it is absolutely physically impossible for somebody to ever go into that type of venture, a 30,000-foot lot. So, we, over the next eight years, we changed it. We made it eight-bedroom, eight units, two bedrooms, 16 bedrooms, over the mixed use. And when the numbers are extrapolated out there, with the updated cost of construction and what you get for an average rent in the town of Norfolk, it become a lot more plausible for somebody to take an adventure and do that. It still wasn't a home run, and still not being near a highway, and with the gallons of the septic, which also limits the, the number of residential units you could have on a 30,000-foot lot, perhaps three years ago, four years ago, we brought it back to town meeting again, and we tried to get it from the eight two-bedroom units, or 16 bedrooms. I think we tried to bring it up to 24, or some in that range, and that was shot down overwhelmingly, because I was one of the sponsors to try to get it up at that time, just showing some financial pro formas on. This would be a lot more incentive for, for someone to build on one of these lots, and it was, we really got a hat put in our hand and sent home because they weren't far. So, just to give you an idea of what the, the feelings were for the people at town meeting four, five years ago, whether that's changed, I'm not sure, but.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
I think that goes to my point, too, which is, you know, we've heard at town meetings that there's an impression in the town that the town leadership is, you know, and developers have too cozy of a relationship, and maybe the public isn't involved, right? So, all the more reason to have members of the public involved on the committees that go to make these recommendations. Ideally, the people on the committees could speak to the, to whatever is being presented at the town meetings and start to dispel the myth that.
Yeah, we're all.
There's some cozy relationship between leadership and developers.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that, because people say everything, but I mean, I was always for everybody having input, whether they need a vote or not, I, I don't know whether that's necessary, but, you know, over the history of the last 15 to 20 years, we have multiple showing input and seminars and holdings of discussions, and we get extremely low turnout, many times nobody. So, it's almost like there's a talk, they want this or that, and we try to coordinate something, there is very little attendance.
But I don't disagree with that, but the notice that went out said residents of the B-1 district, so no one in town has yet been asked, other than residents of the B-1 district, if they want to be on this committee, right?
And apparently, one has and has declined.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say we could leave it up to the committee, have your first meeting and decide whether or not you want residents on your committee. You're not gonna get a whole lot of volunteers with the holiday season and everything like that, before your first meeting, being able to vet any volunteers, if you, if you even get any, so.
Well, you know, there's a, there's a certain skill that somebody should bring to the table when you do this, and whether it be marketing, financial, zoning, whatever, and you find, if you folks have a meeting and you find someone that really is able to offer a substantial amount, that has a background in a needed area, that you guys are welcome to change it and add a couple more, just the, normally, the more votes you have in a committee, the higher is to get things done, just by, by history, but you can always add to it.
So, Erin, are you proposing that we outline now that there will be two spots designated for residents?
I thought that's what we were looking for. I just, I don't, I don't think I understood until yesterday that we weren't looking for town residents, we were looking for B-1 district residents.
I think initially, that's the way it started, because those would be the ones who would most be directly impacted by the changes that were being made.
Yeah.
But I think that it's evolved now into a wider scope, that we feel like any feedback that we could get from residents of the town would be invaluable, whether that be through the community outreach and feedback sessions, or whether that be from somebody showing interest in the first or second meeting. in the first or second meeting in the audience and being welcomed to the board from there. I think we'll, we'll play that one as we go. But I, I think that the feedback that we get from residents is really going to be the driver for a lot of things that we're going to be doing this committee. I don't think that the five people who are going to be on this committee are going to be the ones making decisions on when.
Because the voters in actuality, if anybody shows to the meetings with interest, these are normally the folks that show up at town meeting.
Yes.
That actually cast a vote and actually had input, so it's important to bring, bring those folks in.
Absolutely.
Who just had limited success in the past, but it's a little bit more strategic than what you may think your vision is, because aside from your vision, you have to have the concrete factual that this would in actuality work to someone that's out there that's going to spend the money and develop their property.
Right.
So there's, it's more than just, you know, how you feel that you should have a bakery shop or something in town. There's a little bit more behind that. I think that you guys are going to find that the, the... Even though we can have a 30,000-foot lot, we can have a 50% lot coverage, correct me if I'm wrong, Bobby knows this much better than me, and we can have a, a build zone of 80%, you start to do the math, or when you have the gallonage required for a two-bedroom apartment, you'll find that the gallonage precludes anybody from building out to the maximum levels because there's no space. So the, that's why when folks go for 40B, one of the big things for 40B is they can use the gallonage figures from the state. And Betsy, is that, are the state figures 50% less requirement for gallons than towns?
I'm not sure.
I think that might be the case, so...
But just because, but just if we, I mean, even if we change to the zoning guidelines, that someone could still come into the 40B project.
Oh, without a doubt.
Of course.
Without a doubt.
You know, the public's only get two cracks at this. I mean, these are public hearings that you're going to, public meetings that you're going to have.
Correct.
So it'd be, it's open to the public, for one thing.
I just, I, I'll say it a different way. At least in the meetings that I've been to, there seems to be a history of the town doesn't go out of its way to involve the public in the decisions that it's making. Just because we have a public meeting, it isn't necessarily doing enough. If we're going to make these subcommittees, maybe, maybe we owe it to ourselves and to the public to go about soliciting people to actually show up to participate in these committees. I'm talking a lot.
Oh, good.
No, I, and I, and I think it's the same people that kind of participate in different committees, or the same type of person. And maybe that's a small percentage of the people that are in the town, but if you wanted to find people outside the B1 district, I'm just thinking of like MRC and other groups that actually meet regularly and participate in other things that are going on, other town initiatives, those people would probably be interested in participating. I don't think you'd have a problem finding people either inside or outside, if you looked at other groups where there's citizen participation. But, and, and it's easier to contact those people as well. They'll probably all have a...
That being said, I, and I don't see any reason why we can't make that known and ask them to show up.
Yeah.
And express interest at this first meeting, whatever, right? So I just think, I'll say it, I guess, for the third time, I think it's in our best interest, the town's best interest for us to actively engage the public in the development of these committees and whatever the committees might be discussing.
I think what you're hearing from this group is that if, if that's what the committee would like to do, go for it.
Aside from just a posting of a, of a, a hearing, is there any, does Richard have any plans to advertise or get the word out for this initial meeting?
Yeah, I'm not sure what he plans on doing.
Well, it's been, well, the Complete Streets has been over television on our meetings, it's on Facebook, posting regularly, so I mean, we only have so many avenues to put things out on.
Yeah, there was a Complete Streets meeting 10 days ago, whatever it was.
How many folks showed up?
I would say...
About 10?
About 12, I think Rich said about a dozen.
I've heard people talking about the Streets Initiative at soccer games. I've never heard anyone talking about any other town initiative outside of whatever meeting was addressing it. I think the Street Works thing has gone far beyond the reach of previous missions.
This is fixing a dangerous intersection.
Yes, that it's prioritized.
That becomes really important for the folks.
People are talking about it, Sean. People are talking about it.
Right, right. So that's why, and a lot of these people would be the ones that are most aware of where... The board would have no privy into where are the biggest spots of problems. The public that goes by these places regularly would be the ones that have the, the best idea to put it through.
So however we got the word out for the Streets Initiative, just repeat the process for this next meeting? And seeing if you can get, whether, wherever it may be posted, big sign in the library, Facebook posts?
And even though it was only 10 folks, the collection of data prior to the meeting and then the input at the meeting was pretty productive, pretty productive. There's a list being developed of priorities, is work on this intersection first, do some sidewalks that, second, you know, that type of thing.
How much money we gonna just get in from these grants? Rich has never agreed with us.
Four hundred thousand was Complete Streets?
Yeah, but it's stretched out, isn't it, over?
Yeah.
Yeah, the fir-, I thought the first one was like 200 something, but then there was like a backend to it.
I, I can't quote it, I don't know.
So 400,000 would be the ultimate?
The ultimate, yeah. I think it's like one or two projects a year, that's, that's what I understand. And town prioritizes it, submits the list and says, you know, here's the first one on the list. And I think the two, as I recall, the two intersections that were right up, bubbled right up to the top were the Boardman Street-Rockwood Road intersection and Needham Street-Pond Street intersection down there. Those three, it's a four-way intersection, three of them are fine, but that fourth one coming out of Needham Street, you can't see because it rode bows back in both directions.
So is this 400,000 an annual?
I believe it's cumulative, as I recall.
Yeah, I don't recall what the headline looked like.
I think it's cum, so...
Yeah.
I mean, they were very clear about the fact that this wasn't intended for large reconstructive projects. I mean, while you could use this towards something like that, the intent here is for quick-hit, high-impact projects around the town, that impact public safety.
And by the way, the town has to do the design. This is construction money.
Yep.
Town has to come up with the design, what you want to do.
So that would probably end up fixing two or three intersections.
Yeah.
Depending on what the mitigation method is.
Especially if we're going to use prevalent ways.
Okay, any further discussion on this topic? Are we ready to move on? All right, it's past 7:30, but we need a motion to continue the Five Shire Drive Site Plan, Stormwater Management, and Earth Removal Permit meeting.
To January 15th at 7:30.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a unanimous vote, okay. I think we've covered the agenda.
Do we need to do anything official for that committee? Do we need to vote to appoint Erin? Or we're just, Erin's gonna, she volunteered, he's on it?
We can do that, sure. We can do that.
If you don't, you're giving me it out.
No, just to make sure we lock in.
Don't let him get out. Give us, give us a, give us a motion quick, right, yeah.
What is the committee called?
Town Center Grant Steering Committee?
Town Center, I'm sorry?
Town Center Grant Steering Committee.
Motion to appoint Erin Hunt as the planning board representative to the...
Town Center Grant.
Town Center Grant Steering Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you very much, Erin, for volunteering. All right, are there any other items for this evening? Sir, we have a Design Review Board member here.
The only question was, we haven't seen anything or heard anything about the proposed development for the 273 Denham Street project, and we didn't know whether that's next time or what. We got some information on the computer, but we didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, that hearing's going to be next meeting on January 15th. I'm still waiting on some architectural plans to send to you guys.
Yeah, I think we've seen just a footprint of the building, right?
Right, just a site, just a site plan, so we've asked them to come up with the architectural plans.
And there's an elevation email.
Okay, okay.
Right, yeah, that's all I've gotten, so we've asked them for a little more.
Bob, did you guys talk about the design guidelines last night?
It's, where was, where we're going to put the trailer?
We didn't have a forum.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay, do we have other items of business? Gary? Kevin?
Nothing in mind.
John? Erin, anything else?
Oh, no.
Betsy?
Aye.
Bob?
Again, I was here in case there was a permission being made on 273 Denham Street, and we didn't see anything.
Okay.
And so that was...
Thanks for coming.
And make sure you had copies of what we talked about.
Thank you, I did get that, so...
Okay, so at a very early evening hour, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There we go. Thank you, everybody.